Have they considered that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Good evening, Council.
Staples on my side. It's a present to you. I was kind of having issues of an ice. Staples. What is it? Ice.
Yes.
Oh. And you get for the baby.
Okay.
I love you. The last one. We did. Then you have a sky. And you try. Once it's filled with. Or how you know. Yes. You got to play it. There always. It's always not enough. Or very. This lead. And. Oh. Yes. If they won't say. Okay. If they won't say male or female. Thanks for looking behind me. You think. Yeah. Old business. I'm moving in. I want to hear about that shoe. So you went into the community? I was going to. Yeah. I like to do that. I don't. I'm not gonna. Help your family. Are they housing? Or like? One story? I was. Like well. I got. They don't. They even show. They have a free. But. That's what I wanted to see with. Really live and go. It's a lot of. And I'm. But. I'm not. To the thing. The one. Where. I appreciate it. I'm listening. Okay. But I've been. Oh. Me too. Water. I'm not. Yeah. But I was on. Okay. Well, that's. That way. Good. Yeah. Oh. Very nice. Yeah. That's what. I can. I think. Yes. No. I am. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Hey, for the first. Last one. Dancing. She got grass. You know what? Don't be the. On this person. You know, like Becky. Me not. You. I want. There you go. It's right. Okay. This is. You. You can't. I mean. No. Oh, no. Yes, sir. She's right. I'm sorry. Yeah. Because she knows. She knows. I mean, this. Oh, at least I got something. Was that it? You got something? Oh, she is. Now, why don't you? She's saying. Doing. She tried. She don't know. She's all mad. Yeah. Uh-huh. She can't. She can't. Oh. Wow.
There you are.
Welcome, everyone, to the Highland Park. In-person and virtual regular meeting scheduled for today, Monday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven P. M. Madam Kirk, would you please call the role for tonight?
Councilwoman Shaki. Here. Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Manica.
Here.
Councilwoman Robinson. Present. Council President.
Yeah, thank you very much. Moving on to item three, we have the approval of the agenda, City Council. You've had your package for a couple of days. Wish your pleasure on the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda for Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, City Council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve tonight's agenda as it stands, made by Councilwoman Manica, supported by Councilwoman Martin. Questions, concerns, comments, dissent? Madam Kirk, would you please call the role on item three?
Councilwoman Shaki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Yes.
Yes. Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item four A, that's the approval of the corrected proposed minutes of the virtual and in-person workshop meeting held April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, City Council. Wish your pleasure on item four A.
I make a motion. To approve A. The minutes.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Protemp Robinson, seconded by Councilwoman Manica.
Are we on the workshops or the minutes?
This is the approved corrected minutes for the virtual in-person workshop held on April twenty-first.
What happened to the workshop?
I beg your pardon?
The workshop is first in my packet, town president.
Uh, I only, I'm going by what's on the agenda. I don't know how to order the packet was done.
Yeah, workshop.
Yes, it's A. Out of May.
Okay, it's not marked, though mine is A. Okay.
Motion on the floor to approve made by Protemp Robinson, supported by Councilwoman Manica. Would you call the role on item four A?
Councilwoman Shaki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Yes. Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item four B, approval of the corrected proposed minutes of the virtual in-person regular meeting held on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. City Council, wish your pleasure on item four B.
I move to approve. Item four B. Corrected proposed minutes of virtual and in-person regular meeting held April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Who offered the second?
Ms. Robinson.
Ms. Robinson. Questions, concerns, dissent? Madam Kirk, would you please call the role on item four B?
Councilwoman Shaki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item four C, approval of the proposed minutes of the virtual in-person regular meeting held on May fifth, twenty twenty-five, City Council, wish your pleasure.
I move to approve item four C, proposed minutes of virtual in-person regular meeting held May fifth, two thousand and twenty-five.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica to approve the proposed minutes of the virtual in-person regular meeting held on May fifth, twenty twenty-five. We have support. Protemp offer support. Questions, concerns, dissent? Madam Kirk, would you please call the role on item four C?
Councilwoman Shaki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Uh, this is the portion of our meeting that we set aside for the mayor to address the public and City Council. Madam Mayor, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, citizens.
Good evening.
City Council, now first, Ms. President. I want to thank everybody coming out tonight. Um, and you know, this is a big meeting for our budget, and so we want to ensure that we continue to move the city board and just keep going. But I want to share something. I went to a conference last week in Wisconsin, and the conference was about water. So it was part of the Great Lakes Initiative, and the mayor's, uh, it's called mayor's initiative. So it was mayors from all over that come out borders through the Great Lakes as well as the tribal areas that's on Indians that are on the St. Lawrence, which is in Canada, and on the United States side, as well as cities from Quebec, Canada. And I truly learned a lot about water sanitation and the way that they process sewage and the way that they process our water. So in that, I didn't know that the city of Highland Park is going to receive an award, and this award is Great Lakes Initiative, St. Lawrence Initiative's initiative in honor of presence, in honor to present for twenty twenty-five, the Mayor Richard M. Dale Water Equity Community Award to the city of Highland Park, Michigan, represented by Mayor Glenda McDonald, and this is for the, uh, work that we're doing with our water and the infrastructure. And so they're recognizing the work that's being done, so I just want to thank everybody who participated in making sure that we got funds and that they're doing the work and that we continue in the process because from what I saw in Wisconsin, which is of course a very, very, very large city, we know that, but the process is amazing. And some of the things that they're doing, turning how they are turning sewage into fertilizer and stuff that we use for, you know, for all your vegetables and your plants and things like that. So they're recycling, they're not letting it go down the sewers. And so that saves you money. So I said all that to say, we have a long way to go, but we have a process that we can be proud of and continue to move forward with and look into and somewhere down the line, maybe we'll get to that point where we have our water plant back up and we can recycle and do what we need. They talked about the rain gardens. They talked about how you utilize what you have in the parks to gather stormwater so that we're not allowing it to go into the drains. You're just cutting down on the pricing of sewage. So those are things that we learned up there, and they had, we had a whole bunch of more going on, so I just wanted to share this award with everybody. Thank you all. Citizens. For getting the money. Kansasware. For the beast and getting our stuff done and everybody else who participated. Um, other than that, I just want to talk about, on two minutes, there's a. There's a letter sent by. And this letter, I want people to understand, when you circulate letters that from people who were not what they named on, please find out who the originators are, because if you don't know, default, there's some definitions of, there's a default and a delinquent. The definition of default is that you have missed your payments. The definition of delinquent is that you are behind, but you can enter into an agreement. And so before you guys start talking about what somebody's doing, please make sure you know what's going on. Find out if they are delinquent. Find out if they are default. Find out if they have a payment plan. Because if they have a payment plan, they're not in default. That's anybody. If you have a payment plan, and so you know, and you entered into an agreement with the parks or with the water department or with the tax people, whoever it is, you are not in default. Because if you miss a payment, they can continue into default. But if you have not missed a payment and you have a payment plan, then you're just in.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So this is the portion of the program that we set aside for citizens to speak about items that are on the agenda. Let me pull up my timer here. I'm going to hold to two minutes this evening. So anyone who has something that they would like to say about the agenda and agenda items only, you can please make your way to the podium and please refer to the specific agenda item. We have one, two, three, four, five items on the agenda. City Clerk for the Juneteenth Community Outreach Permit, Mayor's Resolution to Approve the Proposed Budget, the Fire Department Resolution to Accept the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity Grant, Department of Public Works, a resolution to allow D. P. W. to purchase heavy commercial zero-turn lawnmower, resolution to accept the twenty twenty-five F. D. C. V. T. grant, and from the Police Department, a resolution to issue R. F. P. for vehicle towing, storage, and cleanup services. Those are the items that we will entertain comments on right now. You want to state your name, sir, and I'll start the timer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Creedence H. P. Highland Park City Council. Uh, my name is Mark Price. I'm a C. D. A. C. member in District Three Precincts, and my agenda item is item five. Um, I asked the council to approve that application because Juneteenth is very important to the Black community, and I also ask the council to approve item C, the budget. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello, Carla Oliver.
Hello.
Hey. Um, so it's in regards to, uh, item eight, the, uh, the one heavy-duty lawnmower to replacement tires in a resolution. So basically, looking at it, I want to know if there was actually any investigation done as far as utilization. Um, one, because replacing lawnmowers every, every year for the next four years doesn't make sense. If they maintain the integrity of the lawnmowers and check the lawnmowers, there's no need to do that. Also, we have more train budget issues. One, if they don't have trailers on the back of the lawnmowers, that's sufficient, and it doesn't matter what lawnmower they have. Two, if they don't have all operators that have driver's license to operate the trucks to ride these lawnmowers along, then we don't, then that makes no sense. In addition to that, the cost of these lawnmowers, I wonder if that was evaluated extensively because this is quite pricey. In addition to that, the, the, the structural, um, basically dilapidated building, that's where money can go as well because it's unsafe. I don't think right now the best thing is to get four new now lawnmowers, one new lawnmower every year for the next four years if they're maintaining it, maintaining the ones that they have, but also the building that they work out of daily is much more of a concern. That's it. And then also, of course, they need trucks that's actually operable and not on the verge of breaking down. Thank you.
Oh, good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Bless you and to the citizens of this great city. Uh, I am Robert Lodge, President of the East Grand Brush Block Globe. Uh, my concern is item number six. Uh, on last council meeting, the mayor was graciously transparent in some of the items that the budget details and invited the citizens to, uh, go on the website and print them out. Well, I attempted to do that, and this is what I received. And so I don't know if anyone else was able to go on the website and pull down the information, but as you. And so it's my desire and my hopes that we continue to walk in transparency and accountability, and I'm encouraging that this city go over and beyond what other cities are doing. Uh, the mayor shared with us the budget printout of other cities, and I'm hoping and praying because I'm a man of prayer, uh, that the city of Highland Park operates in the spirit of excellence and that the citizens be able to see what's going on so that we can understand how government is being ran. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I'm Sheik King. I stay off of Third and Hamilton, off of Evelyn, and I could tell you this, I know y'all talking about the tires and everything that needs to be done with the lawnmowers, but I'm going to tell you many a times, I done seen these people joyriding up and down second on these lawnmowers, so maybe y'all might need to actually reconsider and think about that because a lot of times, even lawnmowers that y'all supposed to have cut down the city because cut down like the certain areas off of Third, right there off of Evelyn the Third, they don't just cut that, they joyride, ride down a little place, go a little there, they even stopped at the little store on Glendale and Hamilton, even stopped, did that, came back right around. So you know, while y'all telling us y'all want us to pay that, y'all also need to reconsider and think about all the joyriding that these people have been doing. And I also think that some of these people has been a little bit under influence as well, so y'all might need to actually do a better check with them. That's the only thing I could say about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody else moving to the podium, so we will go ahead and move right into our agenda under item five. I beg your pardon?
Is anybody online with their hands up?
There is no one online. Thank you very much. Moving on to item five under the City Clerk, the parade permit application for the Juneteenth Community Outreach Day, Thursday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, from ten thirty A. M. to three P. M., City Council, what is your pleasure on item five?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve made by Councilwoman Shaki, the second was provided by?
Okay. Ms. Robinson.
Protemp Robinson, questions, concerns, and/or dissent?
No. No, no, they did a great job last year and the year before. There was no problems, no headaches, no hiccups. I got no issues with it.
Madam Kirk, would you call the role on item five?
Councilwoman Shaki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item six, under the Mayor's Office Resolution to Approve the Proposed Budget for the period of July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, as presented by Mayor McDonald. City Council, wish your pleasure.
Motion to approve with amendments.
Motion to approve with, say again, sir?
Motion to approve with amendments.
Motion to approve with amendments. Do you have support?
Support.
What would those amendments be, sir?
Okay, so, so each, each council member has been given a packet. Um, we, um, we took our, our, our dear time and several days going over this budget and cutting any waste that we saw what was, was necessary. Uh, we didn't get any answers to the questions that we had, which left us, uh, um, uh, no choice but to try to figure this matter out for ourselves, but i- if you look at the packets that were given you, we managed to cut, I believe, close to about, about three million dollars out of the budget.
Okay, hold on just a second. So typically, so you gave us a packet. Let me just make sure I have this under the proper context. You made a motion to approve item six with the amendments herein that I'm receiving for the first time. I'm, I believe all of us are receiving this for the first time.
Okay.
So at this point, it is with amendments, then now that we're on the floor, we need to go through, and somebody needs to clarify where this document, what this document actually is, where it came from. Yeah. Uh, none of us.
The document came from?
So I just, I'm asking basic question.
Okay.
What the document is.
Okay.
Where it came from.
Okay, the document came from, um, the document.
The clerk does not have a copy.
Oh, the clerk does not have a copy?
She does not.
Can we get a copy for the clerk, please?
Would you be kind enough, sir, to tell me the, uh, the, where the, the authorship of this document was just provided by you or third party?
Uh, this document is provided by me, Council Protemp Robinson, with the assistance of Madam, uh, Madam Treasurer, Lisa Stalarsky, and we sat down and went through this budget thoroughly. And where we found waste, we cut.
And, and you cut that based on, mind you, the, this budget was prepared for us by a person with a master's degree in finance. It was prepared for us by, um, our friend Carl, who has a lifetime of, I'm just, let me just make sure. That was prepared by someone who actually, an actual background in finance. We were audited. We had a professional auditor come in here. This is a person that owned a firm that's handling multimillion-dollar cities like this. We were audited by those people, at least, at least two lawyers here, not to mention the lawyers at these firms, and you're saying to me that yourself, Madam Protemp and Miss Stalarsky, none of you have a degree in finance at all, gave us this amended document.
Okay, so.
I'm just asking a question.
Okay, no, 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 no. So.
I'm asking yes or no question.
So please allow me to retort.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you said what you had to say. Allow me to retort. Okay, so we've been asking for months for a clear and precise breakdown of what this budget was. It reads like stereo instructors, first of all. Okay? I didn't, I didn't, I, I didn't interrupt you, Council President. I would appreciate if you didn't interrupt. Okay. So when we went through this budget, we had to go through this budget by ourselves. The administration answered no questions. Nobody gave us any answers whatsoever. It doesn't matter how much we asked, nobody said anything to us. We found monies sitting in various departments, in various accounts that have been sitting there and haven't been used for three years, but yet you're allocating it every year to sit there and do nothing. That's a waste. Then we found money on the contractual services that nobody seems to want to explain to us. Then we found money under contractual services that nobody seems to want to explain to us what contractual services means. Nobody's telling us anything, but you want us to approve a budget that you've done, that your two lawyers did, that the, uh, uh, that the, uh, that the, uh, finance director did. Nobody's here to answer anything. So we went through this budget on our own and with the help of somebody who does have some financial background, which is Madam Treasurer. We went through this budget and we found glaring contradictions to what you're telling me. Uh, case in point, the mayor's budget went from one, went from one thirty-seven to one forty-nine. That's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more. Now, how is she going to increase her salary without going through the compensation commission? And we found this throughout the entire budget. Budgets have just shot up. People are asking for more and more money, more money than what they had last year. They operated last year on the same funds with no problems. So why can't they operate again this year on those same amount of funds? What's up with the increase?
You said we went from one hundred and forty-nine thousand, from one hundred and thirty-seven thousand to one hundred and forty-nine thousand. That's the difference of.
Okay, so on page.
That's the difference.
Okay, uh, uh, hold on a second. On page, we can go through it.
So I do.
Page.
I do have some questions.
Okay, so hold on a second. So, right here, right here on page three, in two thousand and twenty-three, the mayor's salary was a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred seventy-four dollars, twenty-nine cents.
That's not the mayor's salary.
Excuse me, I'm looking right at.
That's the budget.
Okay, it jumped. It jumped from a hundred and forty-nine.
It's, it went up twelve thousand dollars in a year.
The same four people was here in two thousand and twenty-three under this particular salary. Now we're looking at the increase.
So they made about ten dollars more.
Again, again, I asked the question, why wasn't this explained to us? All of this could have been. Okay, all of this could have been avoided, okay? If the administration had to talk to us and gave us some information to go off, we wouldn't have been at this point.
She said it. It's on video. She said it.
So I have a question.
Now, hold on one second, Ms. Martin.
And then there's money missing. Okay, and then there's money missing from my C D A C. And I want to know where that money went because I didn't authorize it now one bit. I don't care what anybody says. There's over, uh, uh, there's over sixteen hundred dollars missing from my C D A C, and I did not authorize that.
Okay, so, so hold on, no, no, hold on, hold on, Madam Mayor, hold on, hold on, Madam Mayor.
No, 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 because I know I didn't say. The only sixteen.
Point of order. Point of order.
The only sixteen hundred I spent was on the parade in two thousand and twenty-three. I didn't spend nothing this year. I didn't authorize anything.
Up the pause for a second so we can hear from Madam Pro Temp. She's had, she's been very patient. And I'll allow you to go back to that, because she's been waiting and I want to make sure she has an opportunity to interject.
We have a council meeting first and the third Monday of every month. I've emailed our president from that time, our May fifth, to the president, asking for him to call meetings. So that your answers, questions could get answered and our questions could get answered. I, I never got a response. And I also text Councilwoman Manica to ask her to ask the president, and I didn't get a response for that. So this is where we are with this. And just like Council, um, Councilman, because she said, no one has sat down to talk to us about anything.
Okay, and it's, Ms. Martin, if you had a comment to.
Yes, I did. I did, didn't I? I did. Um, so I, I, I had a question actually about this. Um, so this is the courts, right? This is the court on page, I think it's at three?
Court on page three? Yes, ma'am.
No, 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 yes.
Oh, hold on a second. Okay.
So let me get this right.
Two.
And the court, we're talking about salaries. We're talking about a difference of thirty-five, well, let's, let's, let's round it, thirty-five thousand dollars. My question is, where is that justified that we can cut thirty-five thousand dollars in that salary?
Okay.
Salary. And then the longevity of, what are we talking about?
Because it's an increase. It's, it's, it's an increase from the previous year. The court is currently bringing in four hundred thousand dollars in revenue. Their salary is five hundred thousand. That puts us at a hundred thousand dollars in the hole, just off the court's salary alone. Then their operating expenses is another eight hundred sixty-two thousand, uh, 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 six hundred dollars. Okay, so that, so that brings us to nine hundred sixty-two thousand, six hundred dollars in the hole every year on a court that's barely doing anything. Why is that operating expense so, uh, so excessive? Why is that operating expense close to a million dollars? It's on your budget right here. Okay, so maybe, maybe if the public was allowed to print this out and it didn't come out encrypted. Oh, okay, okay. Okay, so, uh, so we're dealing with a lot of seniors. I'm, I, I, I'm going to ask the seniors, do any of you know what a PDF is? I'm curious. I'm curious. You don't know what a PDF is?
I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry.
Okay, so all I'm simply saying is, I'm seeing increases across the board. The court's budget is out of control. It's over, it's almost a million dollars in loss every year. I, I, I don't, I don't honestly believe that they need that much to operate this little ass court.
They're not, they're not a million dollars in the hole. They're not a million dollars in the hole. You're reading that wrong.
Okay, okay.
It's okay, it's okay. That's what I'm saying. That's why I asked the question initially. We had a room full of, we had a room full of finance professionals.
Help us with the budget.
You vetoed the entire budget, Madam Mayor. With a master's degree, try to go do what you're doing.
Okay, well, uh.
Just certain I would do.
Okay.
Because I'm not.
So.
Because I'm not a finance expert.
So question is.
Pretty sure.
So why wasn't the question's answered then? If you're telling me I'm reading it wrong, then explain it to me.
No, no, that's not my job to do. We, we all received the document. I see you, Ms. Manica. So, so I'm going to say this, listen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna conduct the meeting. I'm gonna conduct the meeting. We all receive, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, we all received this document at the same time. We received this document a month and a half ago. Okay, high school marketing, you should be able to read a budget. It is what you plan to spend based on what you have allocated. None of this is hocus pocus. This is our third time doing this.
It's all hocus.
This is our third time doing this. It's just like when you plan for Christmas. You know what you got to spend. You lay the budget out, food, presents, people coming in town. That's your budget. If you exceed your budget, you can't do it. You want to be under budget. That's exactly the same thing that was presented here. The city does not, we take in the same flat revenues. We don't have a lot of new people moving here. Most of our budget is salaries for the people who work here.
We made a motion.
I'm just make, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn the floor back over to council, but I'm gonna say this.
Okay.
I don't want it to be characterized as if members of council were denied information.
Oh, yes.
We were provided the information early due to the limits placed on city council. I don't get special access. Ms. Manica doesn't get special access. Ms. Martin, Mr. Al Shafi, Madam Pro Temp. Because of the way that we have conducted ourselves as a body, I could talk individually, but whatever one of us do, all of us do. We have been barred from the access that was afforded to us when we first got here. You can't burst into somebody's office and cuss them out and demand that they do something for you. That's why they only talk to us via email now. No, no, I'm saying, I want the people in the audience to know, we have not been denied any information. We haven't. It's not, that's not.
Access to her office. Okay.
We did at first.
First into her office and cuss her out.
We, we did at first. I can't.
Not at first.
My, my.
You may have done it, but.
No, my key fob no longer works on that side. As of thirty days after us taking office. So let's, I'm gonna turn it back over to you, Mr. Al Shafi. You were asking questions. This is an opportunity. I'm sorry, Ms. Manica, and then Mr. Al Shafi. He was asking questions. I want you to ask your questions. You have the right to do so, but we have to be honest and transparent. We were given this information six weeks ago.
Where's the finance director? I tell you, we've.
We had two workshops.
We've asked about these, and in each workshop, we've asked these questions and have yet to receive an answer.
It's in the document.
Nobody's ever answered anything. Every time we've asked a question, they said, we will look into it and we'll get back to you.
Ms. Manica, go ahead and make your statement, and I'm gonna turn the floor back over to Mr. Al Shafi. Go ahead, Ms. Manica.
Okay, so all I'm saying is.
Go ahead, Ms. Manica, and I'm gonna turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Al Shafi. Ms. Manica's been waiting patiently. Go ahead, ma'am.
First and foremost, I'm sorry if you can't hear that. First and foremost, I think that, I don't want to call it instructions, but it was whatever you need from the administration. Please just email it to the president so that he can disperse it.
We've done that.
So that's, I'm not questioning what you done and I did not interrupt you.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay. And so I know that there's been some things that I've emailed and I had to take that same process because I did the same thing that you guys did. I just decided to call and ask, or either I just spoke, and I was told the exact same thing. So that's what I've been doing, going through the president of the council, which is actually the procedure. Now, looking at a budget that we're supposed to approve tonight, my question would be, is there any space between approving this budget tonight and July first? When is the budget supposed to be approved? I thought it was June.
We already a day late.
I'm sorry, could you?
The chart says that the budget is supposed to be approved the Friday after the first Monday today.
Right, okay. So here we are today and the treasurer brought this new budget. So if you have this budget out there, this is not the budget that you are seeking off the website. Just so that you are clear, this budget is not the one that's on the website. That's the first thing. Secondly, I'm not sure how we can approve something new. And we just was giving it today. Nor, I would also like to point out and ask, is there a key to this budget? Because I have all kind of color codes here. What's blue? What's green? What's red? What's dark blue? What's black? I, I have no key, so I'm not sure it, what everything's mean, and I'm not asking that question to anybody sitting in the audience. What I am asking and saying is, is that we have to do better as well on what we say when we're going out here and producing it or giving it to the public. Because if you say it incorrectly, it's guaranteed that they're going to keep, some people are going to keep the incorrect part and not get the corrected part. All they heard was salaries, or I'm sorry, the mayor's salary. It has been corrected that that spot is actually more than just her salary. So then therefore whoever did this should have broke that down as well.
So.
Now, what we know in a, in, in a budget, you can approve a budget and then you can also come back and amend a budget during the year. Because there are some things that change, that maybe you don't need this money in this space. And council can come and ask and say, hey, can we take, I'm just gonna give an arbitrary number, two thousand out of here so we can assist this area in what they need to do. So it's not like the budget can't be amended throughout the year, but to try to amend it and hand all five of us something right now, this instant does not make sense to me.
Okay, now. Ms. Manica.
Yes, yes, sir.
You just said something very interesting.
Yes, sir.
You said that we should have took our amendments and broken it down. How many times have we asked the administration and the finance department to take their budget and break it down so we have a better understanding of?
So, would you like me to answer that?
No, hold on a second. I'm just, I'm pointing out, I'm pointing out the hypocrisy of what was just saying. It's sounding hypocritical. You're asking me to break down what we done, but the administration can do the same thing for us. You want me to dummy down what I just put in here, but you couldn't dummy down what you put here.
So let me adjust that for you. I didn't say I couldn't dummy it down.
No, 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 I didn't say anything.
Are you asked a question?
I pointed out, I pointed out.
Chair will be acknowledged after this discourse.
I pointed out the hypocrisy of it, Ms. uh, Ms. Manica. I pointed out the hypocrisy. You said we should break down ours to be more transparent and more clear.
No, you're saying.
No, no, that's just what you just said out of your mouth. You said that we should have broke this down to be more clear and more transparent, but you failed to realize that that's exactly what we asked them to do for this particular.
Motion on the floor is approval of the budget. Let us circle back. Let's circle back. Let's circle back.
We can circle back, but I still have my.
Yes, ma'am, you do. Let's circle back. The chair will address, after Ms. Manica and Ms. Martin, you can go next. Let's circle. Let's make sure we stay on the agenda. Come on.
On this agenda in regards to what I stated.
You made a very valid point, too.
All I'm saying is, and, and please do not paraphrase what I say.
I'm not paraphrasing.
And so I'm not, I'm not going to issue up to you. But what I'm saying is, if we're going to state something to the public.
Thank you.
You need to state it as correct as possible. And that was just my example of it not being, because if I hear the mayor's salary is that, I'm gonna wonder how her salary is that and mine is not, because I know what my salary looked like, and it's not necessarily helping me on that matter. That you saying, because when you said it, I'm gonna have to look over there and say, you make a hundred and forty-nine, whatever it was. But indeed, she does not. So when you say that, you need to say that that's the salary for the mayor and whoever else is on, on that payroll. I'm not sure who it is right now. I'm not trying to name them. But I'm just saying, when we state things to the public, we have to try to be as accurate as possible because it's going to come back. It's going to come back. And again, you could have sent this to us a day ago, two days ago, but I know it just got printed.
Hmm, okay, so if I'm gonna interject, Ms. Martin, you will be next up to speak. I'm gonna interject.
Okay.
And support the statement that Ms. Manica made. We will not sit up here and lie. We will not sit up here and speak things that are untrue. We will not do that. We will not do it. We get up in here lying, I'll shut this meeting down. I will absolutely adjourn the meeting. We will not do, we cannot make false statements. Right now, the city is being sued. We're in litigation because of false statements that were made in this room. It's my obligation as the chairman of this committee to not allow things that are patently false to be stated on the record. I don't, I don't have a dog in the fight how you feel about it. You can't sit here and you can't lie. Ms. Martin, go ahead, please.
Okay, so real quick, I'm going to assume, even though there's no colored panels, I'm assuming that the blue is council's discussions. Um, black is what the mayor proposed, green is what is added, and red is the savings. Is that, is that safe to assume that? Okay.
About right.
Okay, so I do have a couple of questions. My first question is in this matter. Um, I know, um, there's part of this I agree with, but I don't agree with all of this. I'm, I'm just gonna put that out there. Number two, um, it talked about the equipment, because I wish Lisa and I had had a conversation because I did have a question about the equipment rental. What are we renting in the treasury department for three thousand dollars? What is that? That was never explained either. I'm curious on what that is. And then what does the audit of department controls look like? That's fifty thousand that we're talking about adding. So we're also, you're talking about trimming the fat, but there's also things were added to this, this budget. Like I said, I agree with some of it. There are some things that I do agree that need to be cut. I just don't agree with this one a hundred percent.
We also added, Ms. Martin, we, we also added something that we voted on at this council in two thousand and twenty-three. And that was to have a forensic financial audit of the city's expenses, which was never done by the administration. So we added money in to do that so that the council would have the authority to do that themselves. Since the administration is refusing to audit the city's finances.
Okay, okay, so this is my next question to you. If the council's discussion is in blue, I see nothing in this section in blue. I only see green, which is added.
You're right.
So my next question is, then where did the five, fifty thousand dollars come from to add that?
From the cuts that we made in this particular budget, we saved roughly about three million dollars.
So you took from one department to another?
I tell you, some departments made no sense, okay? If you read this budget, some departments made no sense. You know, I give a, I give a, a case in point. I give a case in point for you. So we got here under, under accounting. Well, let's just start from page one. I'mma, I'mma tell you, uh, how many times contractual services pops up here. Here we got, uh, here we got, uh, in, um, Here we got, uh, here we got, uh, in, um, here we got in the, um, whoa, 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 what is this?
We're at forty-two minutes. In the next three minutes, I'm calling for the vote.
I tell you, we got in, in, in council's budget, contractual services to the tune of fifteen thousand dollars. Who is this council contractual service to?
Let's get a liaison.
Well, we haven't approved anything like that.
We, we are not gonna hire a liaison and raise more than all of us combined. That makes absolutely no sense.
Okay, then we got.
No, I'm just saying like the idea of getting.
Okay, okay, then we got.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Right, right, you're right, absolutely. Absolutely, we, that, that municipal money. That, that, that's already there. That funding is actually there for municipal code. Yeah. Okay, let me let you do your thing.
Okay.
Let me let you do your thing.
Okay, okay.
Do your thing. I will wait.
I tell you, then we got. To you, we got in the, the general fund, ninety-five thousand, one hundred twenty-seven dollars miscellaneous. In two thousand and twenty-three, and then twenty thousand that the mayor is proposing in miscellaneous this year. What the hell is miscellaneous?
Where are you, where are you at? Where are you at?
I'm on page, uh, two. I tell you, I'm just on page two. I tell you, then we go down here. Uh, uh, I tell you, then we move down here to, to the, to district court. We, we got contractual services to the tune of twelve thousand dollars. We got nobody that's explained that was there. We got, we got overtime for the mayor to the tune of a thousand dollars. Don't nobody, nobody in this city works after five o'clock. So I don't know what overtime they're doing. Hold up a second, hold up a second. Okay, okay, then under her budget as well, we have contractual services under her budget to the tune of three thousand dollars. Then nobody explains to me. Her professional dues and members is over fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars. What is she assigned to that costs that much money? Okay, uh, the, the, I, I didn't ask them from the mayor. Uh, then we got here under city assessor, we got contractual services to the tune of six thousand dollars. Then again. Under, under firefighters, we got contractual services to the tune of fifteen thousand dollars. Then we got under, uh, under, under treasurer, we got, we got miscellaneous. Uh, 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 to the tune of eight hundred and some odd dollars. Then we got again, what is loan, now. I'm telling you, don't even worry about it, cause I'm not gonna get the answer for that. As we keep going, contractual services again, under, under, under the fire department. Uh, to the tune of three hundred and twenty-one thousand, twenty dollars, increase to three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Okay, okay, okay. I need to know what contractual services these are. I need the answers, Ash.
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, I am about to share. No, hold on a second. We gonna stop right here, cause I'm about to call for the vote.
Is it the ambulance? Okay, then that should have been clarified too.
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen.
I'm just asking questions.
Please, for the people who are.
I'm asking questions.
For the people who are at home and for the people who are in council chambers on the screen.
If you take money from one department to put in the other.
This is, ladies and gentlemen, the chair will intervene. April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Today is May nineteenth, April twenty. We had a. Workshop on. The budget. And we also had on April seventh, an audit presentation and a budget presentation. That is April seventh and April twenty-first. We also had in this chamber, a public hearing. For, on May fifth, we had a public hearing. On the budget. We also had a, a public hearing on the water rates. In those.
There was no discussion.
In those meetings.
We just heard the public.
In those meetings, we had presentations that were made for you that were lengthy, that were made by seasoned professionals. And every additional. Framework for questions that was already in the budget. It had a key on it. It had instructions. If we had questions. There had, had not been a instance that I'm aware of where if asked. The mayor herself was willing to sit down with people to go through the budget. They are. Seasoned professionals where this is their craft. We have, this is our third time for doing this, our third time. And I will assure you that.
She personally sent the.
I will assure you that we were given. So the motion that is on the floor made by Councilman Al Shafi, this is a, this is the current motion that's on the floor. To approve the budget with these amendments. So I would ask, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll made by Councilman Al Shafi as relates to item six? This is the resolution to approve the proposed budget for the period of July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Um, made by Councilman Al Shafi, supported by Council Pro Tem. That was the approval of the budget. With the amendment supplied to us today. Would you please take the roll on that, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica? Councilpro Tem Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Tom?
No, motion carries.
Moving on.
All right, moving on to item seven, under the fire department, resolution to accept the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity Grant. For firefighter turnout gear.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Al Shafi.
We question.
Second, my motion with the second was made by. Ms. Manica. Mr. Shafi, go ahead with your questions.
Okay, so, so for the, uh, for the, uh, fire department, I'm a little concerned. Uh, the, uh, the fourth, uh, whereas says, the city will be reimbursed one hundred percent. Of the funds through this grant once the invoice for gear is paid. I'm, I'm. Are you telling me that they're holding on to the great money and they're going to disperse it that way?
That's how it always happens, it's called loop, yeah.
Is that how it's happening?
It always happens that way.
Okay, all right, then I'm fine with it.
Would you call the roll for item seven, please?
Yes, for the fire department, always.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilpro Tem Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Tom?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item eight, Department of Public Works. Item eight A is a resolution to allow DPW to purchase one heavy-duty commercial zero-turn lawnmower and two replacement tires. City Council, what's your pleasure on item eight A?
Motion to approve with questions.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Al Shafi, seconded by Councilwoman Manica. Go ahead with your question, sir.
Okay, okay, so, um. I'm in agreeance with the, uh, the, a young lady that stood up earlier and spoke about, um. Qualified people riding these mowers. Is everybody properly trained on how to, uh, to ride this, uh, this zero-turn? A thing that they got here?
I'mma follow you, Mr. Shafi. Did he get his question answered? Where is Public Works? We have somebody, Mr. Burgess, are you on the phone, Public Works? Mr. Reese, could somebody speak? Question was, are the people who are gonna be operating this equipment, are they properly trained?
No, not all though, not all of them.
So ma, Mr., to his question too, um, these are zero-turn lawnmowers that you can buy from any big box hardware store?
Right.
So, in your experience, Mr. Burgess, what type of training do you need to run a lawnmower?
Well, the zero-turn has a lot of, uh. A computer aided, um.
Okay.
Uh, Council President?
Yes, sir.
Is there a way that we can? Figure out something to, to properly train in as to how to use this equipment?
So here's the problem that we run into. The, the, we're, we are responsible for approving, we are the, the board of, of directors. And we are responsible for approving the purchases of the corporation. Once those purchases are made, they go in the hands of the employees of the administration. We, so, so there are standards that should exist within that framework.
Okay.
I know, before I said I was gonna make a comment before that, Councilpro Tem, I recognize you. I've lived here for twenty-five years. I use Hamilton every day. It don't matter what time of year it is. I've never seen anybody joyriding a lawnmower down Hamilton. I don't know where you would, in Highland Park on Hamilton, you could get killed on a bike. I'm just saying, I have personally never seen it. It's not even safe in the bike lanes on Hamilton. It's not safe, I've seen people walking to joyride. I just have not personally seen it. I'm just, I'm just saying, I haven't. I haven't. I've seen a lot. I saw Goatman and I saw a man ride a horse in Highland Park. But I just have not seen anybody joyriding the lawnmowers on, down Hamilton. Madam Pro Tem, go right ahead.
The resolution says that we already have four lawnmowers. What's wrong with those?
Not enough, I imagine. We don't have enough, that's for sure.
State of repairs. So we have had the, uh. A, a couple of them for about five or six years. And we have had one, I think, in, that we purchased two years ago. And I think that's about the extent of lawnmowers that we have at this point. However. Uh, if we, well, everyone recognized, I think, that we don't have e, uh, equipment in DPW. And we need to start making that investment. And maybe we won't need one, uh, once a year, but we will need them as maybe once every two years, uh, we can make that decision. Uh, other equipment that we are trying to get, uh, you hopefully, uh, will approve the, uh. Grant for the FS, I mean, for the, uh, vehicles. Uh, we will be shopping around in the coming weeks to find, uh, equipment for that. We agree that the sought shelter is tumbling down, we need to fix that. And that the bricks that facing the, uh, the quinder, uh, need to be rebuilt. We're trying to do all of those things.
And Burgess, I might have to circle you back on this, cause we're gonna stick to the, I'mma circle you back. We're gonna, I have. I have, I have comments from, coming from Madam Pro Tem, and I don't know, Ms. Martin, if you wanna speak, let's get the vote on this, Ms. Manica. Yeah, let's get the vote on this and get, get going.
Yes. How are they getting to the, to the lawn to cut? Do you have vehicles to transport these?
Uh, we have one trailer, but we hope there will be, uh, we hope there will be sufficient funds. In the grant that we'll get to buy a trailer. We already have a quote on it. It's something like three to four thousand dollars. And we're trying to have then two trailers that we can transport these lawns, mowers and other equipment.
So how about doing a resolution to purchase the trailer because you're putting your cart before your horse?
No, we could use the trailer today. Even if you reject the resolution for lawnmowers. Uh, we still need the trailer, but we don't have, but we're trying to fix it so that our funds. That we are getting is coming to us, we would be able to pay for them out of that fund. May not be able to, a particular since the price of vehicles are going up. But it was our original plan to buy the vehicles and the trailer out of the money that we are getting from the FDCA grant.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and call for the roll on item eight A. Res, I'm sorry, Ms. Manica, go right ahead.
We have, how many working lawnmowers?
From day to day, it's either one or four.
Grass waist high already. Additional questions, ma'am?
Yes, there is. I, I was just thinking, cause Mrs., Mr. Burgess is answering. Also, I noticed that we have two choices here. And so we've made a decision on which one. Is that correct? Cause at the end, it looks like we've made a decision already on which company to go with.
Yes.
So the bid was put out for both of these?
So we went out, we, we didn't do a bid, we went out for quotes.
Think that a bid, I'm not sure if somebody can correct me, is necessary, but I was just wondering. We, cause there is another lawnmower company and. Do we need four of the same kind of lawnmowers?
We, we only tried to buy one this year. We would make that decision as the, uh.
I, I do understand.
Your funds are available.
Okay, I do understand. And my, I'm not questioning because I'm one of the persons that believe that we need new equipment. Because at the rate we have repaired the equipment, we could have purchased one. I think we discussed that before. But I'm just wondering.
And we should all agree that this is very difficult work. These lawnmowers are riding over Highland Park streets. They cutting Highland Park grass. It's extra special. Our curves and sidewalks are very.
Mr. Thomas, I, I hear you.
We, we definitely need new equipment.
Here's the question, is that. I think the question earlier was asked about training. I think, I'm not sure, Mr. Shafi, was it you to ask, can we get them training? Does anybody know how much that would cost?
I guess that's something that we would have to put that up to the administration, cause they're, unless we're gonna, unless council is gonna fund it. Those are administration employees, and that would, that will fall upon Public Works. That would also fall upon the city's administrative body. It wouldn't necessarily fall upon us. We can make a recommendation, but we don't have the authority to institute it and we don't, or fund it.
Well, I was just thinking about money.
So, on item eight A, resolution to allow the, uh, DPW to purchase one heavy-duty commercial zero-turn. Do we still have questions, concerns, comments, dissent?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Um, real quick, Mr. Burgess, um, how often are we repairing the current? Um, the, the current lawnmowers that we have?
Uh, the, the two old ones, old one mean five or six years or so. Uh, we got them, uh, repaired through the winter for the season that we're using them to. Uh, do the lawns now. Uh, something happens very frequently with the, uh. Riding all over the ci- city, you know, on the lots where people have thrown things. So the repair bills are tremendous on them.
So how often?
I don't, I don't have a date that I can give you.
So, no, no, so are we repairing them like once every six months, once a month, twice a month?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I don't have a, I can't truthfully answer that.
Okay. Yeah, I did have one more thing, please.
Yep, and after that, I'm calling for the vote.
Okay, great, great. I, I would ask that administration. Or whoever is over DPW. To make sure that they have some type of something, protocol in order for whoever uses the machine. Whatever machine it is, because there is no way that in five years. That we just continue to break the same machine. That we continue to do the same thing over and over and over again. So, therefore, somebody needs to be accountable for breaking the machine. Either you can ride it and you know how. And even if you make a mistake once, I can't see you making the same mistake three times. Four times. So there has to be an accountability in place. So I would just definitely ask. That some type of accountability be put in place for using the machine. When it's being used, et cetera, whatever that protocol needs to be, if we have to sit down and figure that out. Cause we cannot continue in this manner.
Okay, so I'm gonna make my comment and I'm gonna call for the vote, please. Put your attention on the screen. Citizens at home, members of city council, the treasurer of Highland Park owns one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight parcels of land. In the city of Highland Park. The Highland Park House of Commission owns forty-two. So that takes us somewhere to around fifteen hundred. Parcels of land that every month from May to November have to be cut. I have three lawnmowers at my house. I live up the street. I got one that's broken, one that's in good shape and a new one. I got three lawnmowers. This city has fifteen hundred, divide that, divide that. This city has 1,500, divide that, divide that by, let's just say it's a thousand. There's 250 vacant lots a week that need to be cut in the city of Highland Park. And they're using a riding lawnmower, and as Mr. Burgess said, they dump tires, trash, bricks, metal, for, forgive me, Lord, people end up in these fields. So I want us to take into consideration what's being asked. We have four lawnmowers that are typically doing around 200 cuts per week. I'm sorry?
No. No.
So, so members of council, I'm gonna ask for a vote to be called. I want us to consider what we're being asked to do. We're being asked to supply the city with the tools that they need to manage around a thousand lots.
We don't even have enough people to ride.
We don't, exactly. So we definitely need good equipment. I support what you said. So if you call the roll on item 8A, uh, Madam Clerk, resolution to allow DPW to purchase one heavy-duty commercial zero-turn lawnmower and two replacement tires, if you would, ma'am.
Councilman Shafi.
Grass has got to be cut. I'm gonna say yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
No.
Council President?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 8B, resolution to accept the 2025 FDCVT grant, that is the Financially Distressed Cities, Villages and Township Grant. Motion to approve. We have a motion on the floor, but Councilman Shafi, seconded by, who called it?
Ms. Martin.
Ms. Martin. If there are no questions, concerns or dissent, I will call for the roll. Uh, would you call the roll on item 8B?
Councilman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, moving on to item nine, under the Police Department, a resolution to issue a RFP for vehicle towing, storage and cleanup services. Motion to approve. We have a motion to approve. Seconded. Motion to approve the measure seconded ma- by, made by Councilman Shafi, seconded by Councilwoman Manica. Ma'am, you have questions? I did call you, correct. It was you, right, Ms. Manica?
It was, it was. I just wanted to give, um, the opportunity to explain or to go through the storage and cleanup service part. What's the cleanup service? I'm sorry. I don't know.
So during, uh, like collisions on the roadway, the tow companies are required to sweep up and remove any debris or chemicals, uh, fluids and things like that?
Yeah.
That's it? All right.
Okay, would you call the roll for item 8B, please? I'm sorry, for item nine?
Councilman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, so we have finished our agenda. There are only two things left, that's citizens' participation. I'm gonna go two fif- two, two minutes and 15 seconds.
Okay, Ms. King again.
Hold on a second, Ms. King. I'm not set up. If you be patient. I'll get you straight. All right, Ms. King, just give me one second. All right, let me have it.
All right, Ms. King. Okay, I'll put it like this, by the time you was actually getting to our city, I was actually in the high school. And I'm gonna tell you like this, I've been born and raised here. My family has their house here since 1962. My family had another house in Colorado in 1983. I'm just saying, I've been here, born and raised, 42 years. And I'm gonna tell you this, from the time that I've been in high school and from the time I had my kids, and my kids are 21 and 18, well, 22 and 18, compared to what it is now, it went to Google. It's very horrible. There's no streetlights. We barely can go anywhere. I don't want to let my kids out because there's no lights. The lights are gone. I don't understand why we don't have streetlights. Y'all want to put stuff on other stuff, but y'all not basing it on anything else. Maybe some of the reason why we wouldn't have so many lots out here is y'all actually let us buy these lots. A lot of times, y'all allow us to buy these lots when we been asking y'all. Y'all might not have so many parcels of land to have to cut. Just being honest, because I've been actually asking, and y'all been denying people to get these parcels. So if y'all actually allow people to get these parcels, that'd be less parcels for y'all and more things to be put on us, and then y'all can actually ticket us for having this stuff and having different orders. But, but instead, y'all want to put it on a, put it on y'all, put it on the back, on y'all bag, and then want to blame other things instead of actually nipping certain things in the bud. I'm just saying, certain stuff needs to be nipped. I'm just saying, we need schooling back. I'm just being honest. That last little parade was horrible. Because back in the day, we had schools with vans. Where is our schools at? We need schools. That's the reason why we don't have funding. We don't have schools. If we don't have no funding, no kids in here, that's why it looks the way it looks. We don't have no people in the buildings. We need that back. I'm just being honest. We need that back. Y'all took all that away and where do we have? We have nothing. It looks garbage on woodwork. All they used to have funding, all the people used to bring the kids to their school. The schools used to be open. Now we got three schools that charter. We used to have a high school. We have nothing but a, a lot. What are y'all doing to make it change? Instead of y'all talking about the other stuff, put stuff really on the ballot that needs to be there. Why do my kid have to go to an online school and she stay in Highland Park? Where is the high school? You talking about a high school education, high school thing? How we gonna get that and there's no high school here? Tell me that.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
How we gonna have that? Are you telling us to learn something from a high school education and there's no high school here? There's no career academy? There's no nothing?
We're city council. We're not the school board.
It doesn't matter. Y'all need to add that.
I want to make it clear, we, the city council is only responsible for voting on items brought to us by the administration, not just this city council. All city coun- every city council will for us. We get an agenda, this is what we do. This is what we do. We're, we're part-time employees. Everybody else works someplace else. So this, this is what we do. This is our job, this agenda. And I agree with you. So go right ahead. Ma'am, would you state your name? Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Renee Ford. I live at 191 West Buena Vista. I agree with the young lady. I have seen our, um, DBW people ride in the streets with the lawnmower, and I have three lots across the street from me. And not one time have I seen them get out there and pick up the trash or the bottles before they cut the grass. So the young lady is correct. My next question is, how is the treasurer able to come in here and give y'all the budget on the day that she wants you to vote for? But my thing is, and this is personal to me, you're gonna pass out a budget to certain people in the audience. If you're gonna give them to certain people, give them to everybody. That's my opinion. The next thing is for my city.
Here you go, Ms. Renee.
No, I don't want it now. It's too late.
You can have it.
No, but if she's gonna give it to somebody, give it to everybody in the audience. Don't pick and choose. I'm here at every meeting.
I have one.
No, 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 no. Let me do this. Let me do this. And I'm passionate about this city. She picks and chooses who she gives shit to. If you gonna give it, give it.
Calm down. Bring it in.
Uh, excuse me. But it's funny how things go to certain people in this city. I'm here at every meeting. I don't miss a meeting. But I don't get stuff that she give her friends and her buddies. I think that's unfair. So my next question, I know I only got a few minutes, and for my district three council person. Uh, council man.
Not yours.
Oh, come on, Miss C. That's, that's the shit I'm talking about. He thought, he supposed to be representing me, but then he says on camera and on, on video that he's not my council person. That is very disrespectful. So you know what you can do? And I'm ready for y'all.
Did not vote for me.
Don't let anybody take you there. Don't let anybody take you. This is ridiculous.
Okay, Ms. Ford, that is your time. Next citizen, please.
Hold on, excuse me. I want to reset my motion on the budget.
You have to suspend the rules.
I want to reset my motion on the budget. I, my vote. I want to reset my vote on the budget, on this budget.
So, lady, suspend the rules. As it relates to item six, there was a vote of three to two where this budget was approved with these amendments made and offered to this council on today.
We are on citizens' participation, council president. She's got to wait the council affairs.
It don't, it don't, it don't matter. You already know what's gonna happen during council affairs. It don't matter.
She can rescind it.
Okay. Come on, you guys. I don't got no space for negative. I don't have any space in me for negative energy. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
I'm gonna give you your two minutes and 30 seconds. Go for it.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, Ms. Martin. We'll get to that in council affairs, okay? I'm sorry.
Okay, so under this amendment, first, let's talk about the rules. The charter speaks to who prepares a budget, speaks to who presents a budget.
Thank you, Jesus.
The treasurer is not on that list. Neither is the council. You cannot bring forth a budget and say, we switching this and out for these. That's not, first of all, when you're looking in here, you got things like the lien that you're taking out. The lien for the police, that tells who has warrants in this state. That tells who's supposed to be able to, they're supposed to be able to look up and find these people. You moved it. You removed it. You removed the ambulance service. So when you can't get an ambulance, please refer to the treasurer and the court, I mean, and the two people who brought this. Please, because the city treasurer and the city council is not the people who bring forth a, a budget. And bring their own budget. Now, they can go back through the budget that I presented and make recommendations for changes. But they can't, nah, I'm not talking to you. But you cannot bring forth a budget. It is a violation of the charter, and I will be filing charter violations against all three. Second. Second.
Can we bring forth the budget? Well, we amended it.
Excuse me. It's my turn.
Ms. Shafi, please.
It's my turn.
Ms. Shafi, please.
See, I'm not like anybody else. You don't get to talk to me anymore.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I will remind you that this is a city council meeting, of which I am the chair, and I will shut the meeting down.
Because a lot of your services are being cut.
We amended it.
And they claim they're doing it to s- to save money. Do you know, we have one, everybody here makes less than most people. We have a human resource person that only makes money, enough money, to barely feed her fam. She has three children. She can't provide for her fam. These are the things that they're cutting and going through without even talking. You didn't ask a, a chief about liens. What is a lien? What is the lien? What is the lien? The courts use the lien also to be able to post, do their court case. The prosecutor have to have all the information. That's what a lien does. It provides them with the information for their cases. So when you're going through and bringing forth stuff and not knowing what you're talking about, you really need to make sure that you do. Because without an ambulance, you can't get fixed up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I might have to limit you as a citizen to your, to your time. I do appreciate you.
Like everybody else do?
And I do thank you for pointing out the charter so that I didn't have to. Thank you very much. Take that off my, take that off my ta- my plate.
First of all, I want to say God be with us all. Listen. I've been here since I was 17. I came here in Highland Park from River Rouge. I grew up there, small city like Highland Park. And I have seen a lot of down, 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 that people came in, kept what they want, people going out, people came in, gone out. But what I learned today, doing, that I'm going through this stroke, I thank God for being here, because I want to say this. I know all of us have a job to do called care where you stay. Care where you live at, because I have a neighbor and I gave him a couple of dollars to put gas in that lawnmower, help cut out in our area. And I also have a husband that he's not gonna do it, because he feel he paying up tax. And we on the borderline of Highland Park of Detroit, and we paying enough tax, he feel he don't want to do it, but he does make sure our yard is nicely well taken care of. I talked to, uh, Mr. Darrow, he come, he saw what I was talking about. We need trash cans on Side Street. I'm on Geneva, behind Liberty School, and it's a sore eye for me to see Liberty School because I started off in the middle schools all the way to the high school. I did 20 years there, loved it. And I tell you, once about a time, it was called family. Now is all, we all divorced now. Everybody divorced. So everybody doing what they want to do, when they want to do it, and we got inside outsiders coming in, trashing the neighborhood, because I didn't see it. I was standing on the corner, watched kids going to school. And I was seeing them come from Eight Mile, throwing bags and trash out to the beautiful cars. I seen beautiful cars roll the window down, throwing trash out. I said, well, I wrote to the, uh, news people one time and asked them, where's the trash cans? Because it, once about a time, it was trash cans everywhere. So now we got these big ol' large trash cans that I have to pay for, and they got these 32, we got 30, I think a 40 ounce can. You know, because like I say, I wanted the big can. And I don't have no problem paying for it, because I got a lot of people uh, working on their cars or something, throwing their trash. I want their trash. If I gotta put it in my trash can, at least it's in there.
That's your truth.
All right.
Can I have your name, please? Cooper, Carla Cooper. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna be strict with my time here, ma'am. I'll wait for you to state your name and then I'll start.
Hi, I'm Lisa Stolursky. I'm the treasurer of Highland Park and I live on Moss Street. Um, so Charmaine, before I begin, will you set the timer for two minutes for me on your phone?
It's running. No, that's not the timer. I'm the chairman. You understand what I'm saying?
Okay.
So we'll go from there. I don't know if you know the difference between the chairman and the pro tem?
I asked my friend Charmaine to do it, because you cut me off short every time.
Okay. I know how to count.
Okay.
But she already started when she stated her name. She's got a minute and 26 seconds to go.
I'll be done when Charmaine says. You are talking while it's my turn. It's my turn to talk.
Oh, go ahead, Lisa.
So.
Are you talking as a treasurer?
I'm talking as a citizen and I'm explaining to you as a treasurer. Okay.
Treasure, say to the citizens.
I don't know what I'm telling you this as, but I will tell you this.
Okay, we'll start, we resume.
Go ahead.
All right. You guys are interrupting me so that I don't actually get to say what I want to say, which is what happens every time I get up to speak, and I'm really tired of it. So knock it off.
No, no, no. Remove this lady. You don't come to the chairman of any committee and tell him to knock something off. Please remove this lady.
No, I wanted to say that the reason I didn't make more copies is because I ran out of time.
Hold on, she didn't do anything wrong. She's not, she's not doing anything looted.
She didn't do anything wrong.
She didn't do anything wrong.
Ms. Ms. Stolarz, I don't finish your time.
I want to tell Ms. Ford, I'm happy.
I'm gonna start this timer. I'm not gonna say anything.
Okay.
You're gonna say what you're gonna say and you're gonna finish.
Thank you. Hi, I want to let Ms. Ford know that, uh, I only made a few extra copies because I ran out of time today. We didn't have very long to work on it, because I have been out of town a lot this past spring, um, with, uh, people in my family who live out of state, having illnesses and, and dying. Um, and so, um, I only had a few days to work on this, um, before today, um, with Charmaine and Keshid, who asked me if I would interpret through Excel, um, what they would like to cut in the budget, mainly because they haven't been able to get answers out of the administration about the questions that they have had. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. How are you, sir?
I'm good. How am I, sir?
State your name.
My name is Jerome Dre. Uh, thank you through the chair. Good evening. Uh, just a couple- Uh, just a couple of quick questions. First, on the budget, is it possible to have the salaries broken out? Doesn't have to be by name. Just for instance, number of salary individuals in the council chambers.
We've asked that question. Yes, sir.
Okay, yes.
Since 2023.
Yes.
All right.
Asked that question.
I mean, just, so. Is it possible to have different descriptions broken out in the budget? Okay, for instance, you mentioned the administrat, not the administration, but the mayor's office and that salary. But there apparently are four or five individuals that are in there. Could that be broken out? Doesn't have to be by the name of person. Just what that salary entails.
You're talking about by their title.
Doesn't even have to be tied. Doesn't even have to be tied. Just, just that in itself. Um, the second, the second thing is, and, and the young lady had mentioned it as it relates to um, the, the resolution for additional equipment for public works. And so, you know, if it's, if it's one, or if it's four, or if it's seven, whatever that is. And as, as, as the chair had indicated, with that number of lots to be cut, and I, and I am sort of dating myself from being in the military. We used to have to get up and do a policing every morning. That means a number of individuals spread out, they go completely across a parcel, and they pick up everything that's there.
Thank you.
All right. And so, with the, with the Public Works Department, that equipment is being broken because I can attest, I used to be the unbuzzman here, and as the chair said, any and everything you can think of is in those lots. If one of those tractor, one of those lawnmowers hit, some of that equipment is broken. And in a number of cases, if it hit a brick or something like that, that's a major repair. That may be easier to get a new piece of equipment. Okay? Uh, my last, my last point, Chair, and this pertains to our treasurer.
And I don't want to rush you, Mr. Dre, but I do want you to be expeditious.
Okay, I will. And so, I received a number of, of notices of assessment from our income tax department. So, I finally responded to them because they were indicating that I owed the city money, yet the city owes me money. So, I didn't, I didn't even send it in because I'm thinking I'm doing a good thing. And not even receiving the money from the city that the city owes me for my income taxes. Okay, so I sent all of them in. And so, they owe me over five hundred, six hundred dollars. But my point is this. I called, I called the, the city, the income tax department in Eaton Rapids. Eaton Rapids, and I spoke with someone there. Number one, whoever I spoke with was rude, as could be. Number two, she indicated that I was, I would have been at fault, which was wrong. And so, I would just like for the income tax department to speak to whoever that person is and get it right.
Okay. And I will say this too, Mr. Dre. I don't see you that often, so I, I, I let you go over. It's been a while since I've seen you, but typically, two minutes and thirty seconds. I run this clock at two minutes.
All right. I appreciate that, and it won't happen again.
Okay. And Ms. King, you already spoke, so we don't do, we don't do repeats during. You get one opportunity to speak.
I only get one opportunity.
Yes, ma'am. Everybody does. No, ma'am. No, no, no. This is, I'm not, I don't want to be rude. I'm trying to keep the framework of my meeting.
October the tenth.
Ma'am. I don't intend to be rude to you. I just want to make sure that I keep the framework.
The police got there, he was asking.
Ma'am, would you please, ma'am, would you please? In the city of Detroit, they would drag you out of the room. I'm trying to.
Jesus, Jesus.
Please, please, ma'am.
That's why they killed my mother in 2011.
Okay, so. Tasker, come on up.
Parking lot.
Come on up, please. Please, ma'am. Please, please. Ladies and gentlemen, before I let you go, sir, um, before I let you go, just, just pause. The, what I should do in this chair, we don't have a problem with chair, what I should do is have people removed from the room like they do in the city of Detroit. I don't want to do that. I don't. It's, it's, we, it's a little small town, but we are doing things disrespectfully in the city of Highland Park that we wouldn't do anyplace else, ever. You would never do this in Detroit City Council Chamber. None of you. So, please, I'm not trying to be the bad guy. You have a right to speak, but I'm saying, don't do that. I'm sorry, sir. When you're ready. Go right ahead.
Again, Robert Lodge, I want to stand here and make it clear that I am not against the mayor. I am not against this council. I'm against the culture that has been cultivated in the way communication is being conducted. It's ridiculous. It's disrespectful, and the citizens of this city deserve better. It's ridiculous. Um, I do want to say this. On, on May the fifth, President Council, uh, Council President Thomas informed us that the city is ran by a cartel. And he shared that.
That's not what I said, sir. I said the water department is a cartel. You're misquoting me.
Okay, okay.
I said the water department is a cartel. Correct.
So, let me allow, allow me to set the record straight, because you also misquoted me when you said I was offended by the word cartel.
You stated that you were.
I did not state that. Let me set the record straight. But what I am offended by is the language, the foul language that's being used, especially when we use the lowest name in vain. That's what I said I was offended by. But let me continue. Please, let me continue.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Since we understand that the water department is a cartel, uh, I looked up the Oxford definition. And the definition, definition, because you shared with us, and I appreciate that you shared the word cartel in a positive connotation. But most of us understand the word cartel in a negative connotation. And so, the Oxford definition says, "An association of manufacturers or suppliers with the purpose of maintaining prices at a high level and restricting competition." Sounds like price gouging to me. Oh, that's, that's, that's sounds like a drug cartel, which our government is trying to push out of our country. Now, this is what I find interesting. Because the word cartel, the origin of cartel is a political statement. And this is what it means. Political parties that join forces to put, to promote a common cause, such as limiting a supply of a product to force prices to remain high. So, since you just stated that the water department is a cartel.
Great Lakes Water.
It sounds like price gouging to me.
I agree.
And so, my question.
Right, ask your question quickly so we can move on.
Yeah, my question was, who was the cartel? You just answered it. The water department.
Yes, sir.
And my question has been, why, when the citizens ask questions, there's never time allowed for those questions to be answered? And this is why you get all this conflict.
Okay, now, thank you very much.
You, you interrupted me. I do want to say one last thing.
We had almost three minutes.
Okay. This, this, this council has frequently, has the right to look at this cartel and consider this to be anti-competitive behavior. And most jurisdictions will outlaw those type of practices.
Stop you right there, and I will welcome you back. I'll see you at the next meeting, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the invitation.
All right.
I will be back.
So, hold on. I'm going to two minutes and thirty seconds. I already know, I already know.
Can I please not be interrupted?
No, I'm, I'm giving you actually thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Go for it.
Carla Oliver. So, um, I've been here for a while, uh, but I'm also very much a voice for the city. Working for this city, I got to meet a lot of great residents. In that process, I've been very vocal about what I say and what I stand up for, for y'all. Not me, but for y'all. In that process, I have been treated the most nasty from AKA mayor. In addition to being, a lot of people being allowed to harass me. This is unacceptable because I speak for y'all.
Ma'am, you're supposed to be addressing us. You're supposed to be addressing us.
We need to stop the favoritism, the bias, and let everybody have a point of view. But what's not going to happen is to be used, the police being asked about me, asking around about me, asking for my phone number. The police will not be used by the mayor to intimidate me or any other department in this city because I speak my mind or speak my voice for these residents. Everything that I say, like everything I said last week, is all data. That should be good enough. But what doesn't need is the nastiness from her. I have been harassed as a city employee from other people in the departments. And now that I'm no longer there, I can say whatever I want to say. And I'm going to do that. But what's not going to happen is any form of intimidation from anybody that works for the city of Highland Park because of her. The nastiness that happened last week, when I'm minding my business to try to come up here and speak, there was no need for it. And the response is what they got from, for the nastiness. But what shouldn't have happened is called upon because of the nastiness that the police has called up to intimidate. That's unacceptable. And I'm putting that on record today.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening. Let's all take a collective whoop-sah moment here, right?
Yes, it is.
All right, let's get started, because I'm, I'm gonna follow up right behind Ms. Ford. I just need that little break. Good evening. Thank you, love. Yolanda Rollam Hughes, District Three, and I have a couple of questions. I'm trying to understand the, the treasurer's role, right? And so, just during this meeting, AI is amazing. In case any of you have never used it, it will break it all the way down. And when it comes to a budget, the treasurer is never involved in that. I find that interesting that not only is she not involved, but she brought her own budget and gave it to her friends. And then that, those friends began to try to hijack the real meeting. That's unacceptable. That is unacceptable. I could have stayed home and cut y'all out on the TV instead of coming in here in this sweat. You all didn't achieve what we came for, right? Um, then I also have a question regarding Lisa, because here we are. How many months outside of the election is she bonded? Did we get that bond? So, she's an elected treasurer, but not an appointed one, right? Or not a duly sworn in one, right? Because she can't, she can't, she can't do the functions, right, Lisa?
No.
Okay. And so, then why does she have access to the budget with any of our city council meeting people? Jamal, you ain't calling me and tell me we was having a meeting about the budget? How did they get that? I don't understand. And I'm just picking with Jamal. I rarely talk to him. Um, then we talked about the, the court budget. What are you comparing it to? What, what, you just come in here talking. You have no points, no data to support it. You called it a no-nothing court, and I'm talking to you, Keshi. Um, do you think we should still have it? If it's no-nothing, then let's close it. But we know it's not no-nothing, don't we? And then finally, I didn't hear if you all accepted the budget or not, because there's a lot of foolery going on, and probably was me causing the foolery. But I don't know what was said. Did we accept the budget?
It was a.
I, I didn't hear.
So, it was a three-two vote, and in Council Affairs, that may change.
Okay, okay. All right, because I just, I just, I just don't understand how we are here every year under this group of people in this same place every year. I'm embarrassed. You talk about citizens coming in. I'm embarrassed. I can't even tell them to look at us on YouTube, right? I can't. You got people talking about who moved in, moving back out because of this foolery. And yet, we want to cry and point fingers because the mayor's office ain't broke down by, by line. That's me. I'm good. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
I have to do this. I have to apologize. Because that's really not me. And I do want to apologize. But I'm passionate about what I say. But I came up here to say was about District Three. We wanted to know, I am on the CDAC. And we wanted to know about the budget because it was.
I just told Ms. King she don't get a second trip.
Okay, okay. But I do want to, if you don't hear nothing else, I do want to legally apologize.
Good evening, everyone. I have not intended to come here and speak, but on behalf of Ms. Ford, we had an audio off. I'm sorry. Come on, Ms. Price. Um, we had our monthly CDAC meeting, and there was some question asked, and we voted. And Ms. Ford was, um, agreed to come before the council to ask questions. So, um, as of 2020, we all know that a charter was created, and through that, the CDAC was created. And I was appointed and was made president of District Three continuously. In the process of that time, we had our regular meeting, and we did put an order in and gave it to our council for what we want to spend the money for. And as, excuse me, as CDAC president continue, uh, ongoing from the beginning to now, we never put in order for any money to be spent other than what we gave to Council Keshi, who had, I, as president, just found out that the money was spent for a float. And no disrespect, I never knew that. Um, Mr. Powell and Mr. Miller, he works for the city, we had our regular meeting, and that no one ever asked us. And so, as, um, I apologize for Ms. Ford. Uh, she intend to bring some documents, questions and information. But as of now, I have no knowledge of any money that has been spent in a vote, by the way of the vote for the CDAC ever. And once again, I did submit some to Council Keshi and lengthen what we wanted to purchase. And I can share that with you. You may not agree. So, we voted that we should help light up our community. So, we put in an order that was, uh, I guess a year ago or two, that we would buy, uh, dusted on lights and the one that reflect the bulbs. And then also for the homes that did not have, uh, light switches, who was going to purchase, uh, solar, solar lighting for them. And so, we put that in. I did give that to our council, council person. But as a whole, never has we, as a body, ever authorized any spending or did any spending. Thank you. I'm only speaking because of Ms. Ford. It was her duty to do so. Thank you for listening. This is our treasurer.
Thank you.
And thank you.
All right. Moving on with this, ma'am. And then we'll move into Council Affairs. We didn't beat the sun tonight, Ms. Martin.
I, it's all right. I know.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Madeline Harrell. I'm a lifelong resident of Highland Park. Lifelong. I live at the Bishop Moore Apartments on Manchester and Second. About six weeks ago, maybe two months, I looked out my balcony window, and there was a traffic sign that was not where it's supposed to be. It was laying across the sidewalk, the one where it's walk at the top and stop at the bottom. I called and left a message for you. I called, no, I called Mrs. Robinson, and we talked. But there's nothing that has been done in all this time. So, I wanted to just say what was on my mind. It's a danger. There are exposed wires. The machinery is just laying across the lawn. Uh, it's on the southwest corner. It's on the southwest corner of Manchester and Second. Someone, please come and see about it and repair it.
That box?
Yes. It's just laying there. And the sidewalks have been redone. The grass is being replanted and that machinery is still just laying there. Please, someone, whatever department will take care of it.
Remind us again what corner that is?
It's on the southwest corner of Manchester and Second. Thank you. Thank you too.
Thank you ma'am. I'm gonna hold the gallery. I have a caller online that would like to speak. I'm gonna allow the chief to speak first. And then we have one caller online that is Seven. You're gonna have to identify yourself when the time comes. I'll ask you to unmute as well as Anthony. We're gonna hear from the chief right now. Go ahead, chief.
Good evening, everyone. I, I intended on taking my, my time to speak on some budget concerns. So rather than go through that line by line, I'm just gonna say I believe that the proposed budget would have serious public safety ramifications for not only the police, but as well as the fire. Moving on, in terms of the light, it's the lighting department. And we contacted the lighting department on numerous occasions to get the light moved. The problem with moving, us moving the light is we become liable. If we move it and the wire tears and sparks, it could shut down the light. The city would become liable. So we do have an order in to repair the light. It's my understanding they plan on pouring a concrete pedestal to put that back on. So I think it's part of the process for construction. So more importantly, there's been some serious allegations made, in my opinion, against the police department that the mayor has solicited the police department to harass a member of this community. That could not be further from the truth. In fact, it should be noted that for a significant, a pretty significant amount of time, Ms. Oliver has had, Ms. Oliver has had a pending warrant that was issued by the 30th District Court. The number, the, the attempt to get her phone number was a courtesy to call her rather than arresting her and bringing her to the police department. Most recently, I solicited the court and asked them to mail her a court date as opposed to have an outstanding warrant. I don't know what the status of that is yet. However, at the time we were trying to make contact with her, it was out of a courtesy to not bring her to our jail and treat her, you know, out of, with any disrespect. So the, the, the allegations that she made again could not be further from the truth. We, we, that is not the business we're in. The mayor has never asked me to harass anybody or do anything on her behalf. The mayor does not control this police department. Simple as that. And I can't make that any clearer. She cannot make me do something illegal and nor has she ever asked. Matter of fact, she's, she does not get involved in the police department business. So when I hear this constantly, it, this misinformation or disinformation, in my opinion, it, it really irritates me. So if anyone has a question regarding anything that goes on with the police department, as I always say, you're more than welcome to come ask.
It's public information. It's a little... So I have two people online. Please, no ma'am, let's don't. So we're gonna go to Seven that's online. I'm gonna ask you to unmute. Thank you so much for those folks in the gallery. We're gonna start with you, Seven. Would you please identify yourself? Your time starts when you give us your name, sir, or ma'am.
Good evening. Lovely, beautiful people of Highland Park. My name is Robert Shannon. I'm also known as Seven, like the number. First, I want to thank everybody for this opportunity, you know, to speak with you. I'm gonna be as brief as possible. I'm in California until the 23rd. Then I look forward to seeing people in person. So I'm here because I would like to put something on the table that I believe, you know, should have been on the corner a long time ago, at least 30 years ago. I am a, I'm a, I'm 47 years old. I'm a, I'm a blessed actor in the industry. I've been fortunate enough to work on Beautiful in the Black Messiah, Detroiters. My, my people have seen me. I give all glory and praise to the most high. But I've recently been deemed to portray Donald Goin's. So I'm producing the biopic for Donald Goin's, the legendary author, the godfather of urban literature, and your favorite rapper's favorite writer. I am here because I would like to propose getting Donnie his street. I think Donnie should have a street named after him. I think it should be in Highland Park. You know, where his people are, the people that he spoke of, the streets that he spoke of, he's made legendary. At some point, I'm gonna get a little emotional too, but it's something dear to my heart.
Mural that you sent me on the wall. This young man sent this email earlier. Said he, that's a mural of Donald Goin's going in over at Parker Village.
So you're right.
So I got you. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for showing that because I was actually gonna let everyone know until I get back. If they would like, they can go over to Parker Village, check it out with Juan. The, the amazing artist Syntax was more than happy to do it. He was trying to get it done, you know, before. So, and it's not completed. We're gonna put the titles of his books up there. We have something from his family as well. I just heard about this meeting, you know, so I was able to jump in. But given time or whatnot, you know, we weren't in connection with the family and everything. So, you know, I'd just like to bring Donnie home.
I appreciate that too. And then that will be your time. When you come back to the city, would you be kind enough to come and talk to members of council? I did receive the email. Now that I've talked to you, I'll forward that email to the other members of council. I wanted to wait and give you an opportunity to speak to them first. Just members, I heard about this young man trying to put this mural up to honor Donald Goin's and his legacy in the city of Highland Park. I thought it was real cool. I suggested he forward it to the mayor. And then before I even forward it to the rest of the council members, I wanted him to be able to come and speak on it himself. I'll forward the email to you tonight. I thought it was an interesting concept. I didn't want to steal this young man's thunder. And I wish you the best of luck. So I look forward to seeing you back in the city. That other person who had their hand up has lowered their hand. And so now we're gonna move into council affairs. So what I want to do, just one quick thing before we move into council affairs. I'm gonna ask, I'm going to literally beg my council members. We are in litigation right now because of things that were said in council affairs. So please, so please, let's keep the discussion on affairs of council. I am not interested in seeing individuals' personal business. I've said that for my first day in city council. Your personal business is your personal business. Please, let's not bring that into council affairs. It is none of my business, okay? After my daughter died, I didn't come to city council for two months. Because that was none of y'all business what I was going through. I kept that at home. So whatever's going on in your personal lives, members of council, I am begging you. We are in court right now, facing nearly a million dollars in litigation because of something that was said during council affairs. Let's stick to city council affairs. Let's answer these people's questions, deal with city council issues. And let's keep our personal business personal if we can. So we're gonna start with the councilman from the third district. It's your time, Mr. Alshafi. Oh, the last thing is due to Robert's rule. The chair can put a cap on council affairs. We gonna make that. If we got them going three minutes, we gonna hold us to five from now on. Because we've gone 25 minutes in these chairs. These people want to go home. So they gotta do it in three, we can do it in five.
Robert's rule says 10.
Robert's rule says how much?
10 minutes.
Okay, you want to show me? Because I don't mind being wrong. I don't mind at all.
Google it.
I'm, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I run the meeting. We have five minutes. So go for it, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna set the timer. Mr. Alshafi, the floor is yours.
My question is exclusively for Mr. Bosnick. I'm, I'm looking at this ordinance. I'm getting a lot of calls about this, this rental ordinance from, from a lot of residents and investors in the city who feel like they're being, being taken advantage of.
Is this at my desk?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so I've had residents to call me and tell me that they're being forced to turn their other pieces of property, even though they don't have anybody in them. Or if they do have somebody in them, it's a family member that's not paying rent. It's not a rental. But they're being forced to make it a rental and then they're being forced to pay the rental fees that are associated with that rental. I think that's unfair. I think that's unfair because there are a lot of residents out here who have family members who they bought houses for, that's still in their names, that they live in. And for them to be forced to turn it into a rental, they're not making any money off of it. But they're being forced to turn it into a rental bottom of dinner group and they're being forced to pay these fees every year. A hundred dollars here, $250 here for the inspection, fines and penalties if they don't meet the requirements. They gave, gave one lady, she was here at the last council meeting. And she said they forced her to turn her daughter's house into a rental even though her daughter don't pay rent. So they forced her and then they gave her a 30-day notice. If she didn't bring the property up to, up to Section A code, which everybody knows, Section A code is expensive, okay? You're talking about new windows, new gutters, new doors, paint, gas, smoke detectors. That could get kind of pricey for people who don't have a lot of money, okay? And for her to be forced to do that, I think it's unfair. I think we need to relook at this ordinance and reconsider what's being done here.
All right, so you want me to discuss with McKenna the standards they use and determine whether they enforce it on occupied ordinance?
I think, I think, I, I think what needs to happen until we get an opportunity to sit down as a collective and look over this ordinance, maybe they can freeze or put a moratorium on their activities until the council has a chance to thoroughly vet this order.
I'll contact McKenna tomorrow and see if I can get some information for the next council meeting.
Okay, I appreciate that. Now you back, House President.
All right, and I'll be interested in hosting a workshop to that end because we can't change that ordinance. We have the authority to change it. So once they get us together, we can get that done. Okay, so, Ms. Martin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Okay, so a couple of things I would like to do today. Man, I'm tired. That's been a lot today. First question I have is how do we go about making changes to the budget? What would be the process? Because like I said, oh, first things first, I also want to rescind my vote. Let's do that first.
You have to request to suspend the rule.
I want to rescind my vote on the budget with the amendments.
You have to request to suspend the rules, Ms. Martin.
Mr. Bosnick?
Be a motion to suspend the rules.
Can I make a motion to suspend the rules, Mr. Bosnick?
It would have to be seconded and then it would be before this body. Ordinarily, Robert's Rules of Order would require a two-thirds vote, but this court never, this council never adopted Robert's Rules of Order. So majority vote would, would govern.
So there's a motion on the floor to suspend the rules made by Councilwoman Martin.
It's called roll.
It was seconded by?
It's called roll.
Please call a roll on the vote to suspend the rules.
Yes.
She's asking. She doesn't get to vote.
She does.
No, she doesn't. Because the last time that I asked to suspend the rules, it was just the four of y'all. It was just the four of y'all. I asked to suspend the rule that night.
She gets to vote. Go ahead, Ms. Martin.
I don't remember you ever not being able to vote.
Mr. Bosnick, the last time I asked to suspend the rules at the last council meeting, I was not allowed to vote. It was up to the four of them to decide if they wanted to let me suspend the rules.
According to Robert Rules of Order. Thank you very much.
I don't recall that and I'm just applying that.
Thank you. So, go ahead.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
No.
Council President Towns?
Yes, to suspend the rules. Under this circumstances, Ms. Martin, you had a statement that you wanted to make about your vote.
So I want to rescind my vote for the budget of amendments.
So that is item six. That means the vote that was made, the resolution to approve the proposed budget for the period of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026, as presented by Mayor McDonald. My motion was made by Councilman Alshafi, supported by Councilwoman Robinson, to approve the budget with this thing that was delivered to us today as our budget, as the amendment. And Ms. Martin is removing her support for that item. So at this time, right now, item six, city still has business. The chair will entertain a motion on item six.
So I want to make a motion to...
Wait, hold on one second. Mr. Bosnick?
I'm just gonna say, I think the proper order would be the city council vote to allow Ms. Martin to rescind her vote. And then you have another vote on Mayor McDonald's.
Leave it up to the committee to teach you so.
I want to make a motion to rescind my vote for the amended budget.
Ms., Ms., um...
Is there any support?
So we have a motion on the floor to rescind the vote.
For item six.
Item six. It was made, a motion made by Councilwoman Martin, supported by Councilwoman Manica. Would you please call a roll on that motion?
Tony Bosnick, can you do city business in council affairs?
This council's done that previously, so I would say yes. And the council is governed by its own rules because it never adopted Robert's Rules of Order at the beginning of the council term.
Councilwoman Alshafi?
Uh, no.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
No.
Council President Towns?
Yes, we accept your rescension of your vote. Now, we still have item six that needs to be dealt with. The chair will entertain a motion on item six during council affairs.
Okay, so I want to make a motion on six. I want to make a motion on the resolution to approve the proposed budget for the period of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026, as the president, presented by the mayor, Mayor Glenda McDonald.
Second.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve item six, the resolution to approve the proposed budget for the period of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026, as presented by Glenda McDonald. Mayor Glenda McDonald made by Councilwoman Martin, seconded by Councilwoman Manica. Call a roll. I'm sorry, ma'am. My head was down. I deeply apologize.
I have a question for the attorney. Can there be another motion at this time to table this?
We have a motion on the floor.
And there's a motion on the floor right now.
Yes, money missing from our CDAC. Nobody told me that.
Okay, and nobody said to...
There's a motion on the floor that could be...
Okay, Madam Perkins, would you please call a roll on Ms. Martin's motion to approve item six, resolution to approve the proposed budget for the period of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026, as presented by Mayor McDonald. This motion was made by Councilwoman Martin, supported by Councilwoman Manica. Would you please call a roll?
Councilwoman Alshafi?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes. Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
No.
Council President Towns?
Yes, motion carries. The budget has been approved for another year, ladies and gentlemen. This is the third time we've had to do this exact same thing. This is the third.
So is my time up? Is my time up?
No, it's your time.
Okay, great. Okay, great, great, great. So we're still in council affairs, right? Okay, great, great, great. Okay, so, yeah, how do we go about making changes to the budget? How do we go? What's that process? Two, DPW, do they work, do they all work on the same shift at the same time? That's one question. About the CDAC money, something about a float. The CDAC money that was spent was spent in October. There was no flow in October. The parade happens in May. The money was spent in October.
So that'd be something you discuss off, off.
The, um... Lisa, we gotta get you bonded because this is my thing. It doesn't make sense. How are we legally accepting money and depositing it without anybody being bonded? That doesn't make any sense. Also, I want to make a motion. I want to call a moratorium for the rental ordinance until we amend the ordinance. Do I have support for that? I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
We have a motion to suspend the rules for a second vote made by Councilwoman Martin, supported by Councilman Alshafi. Questions concerned, a dissent, so let's call the rule on suspending it. Let's call the roll on suspending the rules.
Councilwoman Alshafi?
Yes, to suspend the rules.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Towns?
Yes, motion carries. Ms. Martin, the floor is still yours. Go for it.
Okay, so now I can make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I want to make a motion to call a moratorium until the rental ordinance is amended.
Second. Okay, I give it to you, Mr. Alshafi. So we have a motion on the floor to suspend the rental ordinance while we work on it. There's a moratorium. It's been, we're declaring a moratorium. A motion made by Councilwoman Martin, supported by Councilman Alshafi. You have questions concerned?
Yes, you need to put a time on it.
I did. Until we amend that ordinance.
So 90 days, 60 days, 21?
I don't know. How long is it gonna take us to amend it? I mean, it could take them... I don't know. How long is it gonna take us to amend it? I mean, it's been taking us so long with this meeting. How long is it gonna take us to amend it?
At least ninety days. Give us, give us ninety days.
Stop, stop.
Can y'all work together in nine?
Point of order. I just asked for a point of order.
We can do it in three months, definitely.
You can, we can do this in three months?
Yes, we're gonna need that much time. We are.
I'm looking at, we can do this in three months.
I mustn't ask for a point of order.
You did, you did, but I'm just saying.
Yes.
We're all agreeing.
We can do this in three months, working together.
So go ahead, Ms. Manica. You had, you had a statement because I'm ready to call for the vote on that thing.
Let's call it a vote.
Ms. Manica, you have something you wanted to bring forward?
So you, you're saying ninety days?
Ninety days.
No, no, what? Can I finish?
I thought it was my turn.
I can ask you a question, though.
Go for it.
You said ninety days.
Yeah.
Thirty days. You're telling me that we can't come back in a week or two weeks to discuss.
But we just want to give ourselves three months.
No, why? No, we can't. Okay, listen to what I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am.
First, before y'all jump to this, um, thing, are we just talking about on? We're talking about just on rental property, correct?
Right now, that's what the.
Is that just for residents?
That's what the, what are you talking about? So, yeah, the rental order.
Okay, why would we wait ninety days, though?
No, 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 we, we just, I'm sorry, ma'am. I may imply, I may give us at least, because we're gonna need to have it vetted by the legal department. We don't know how long that's gonna take.
Or the process.
Yeah, we don't know. So I wanted to make sure we had enough time.
Right.
That's the summer. I.
Okay, I, I want, I want to quickly, uh, piggyback on what you just said. I agree with the ninety days. We have historically have a tendency to bump heads on work. So ninety days would give us enough time to work this ordinance out where there's no problem. Everybody's in agreement. So when it comes to a vote, it would be unanimous.
And that would be, that would give the citizens a reprieve over the summer because again, you got summer taxes coming. So that gives us a three minute, that gives us? Yes, we gotta, we gotta have a public hearing. We all have to still read the entire thing from start to finish.
Exactly.
So that, that's, that's, and now if we could get done sooner than that, that would be awesome. But that at least gives us the summer to work on this for citizens. Did that, did that address your, uh, your concern, Ms. Manica?
It does.
Okay, so now we have a vote on the floor. We have a motion on the floor for a moratorium on the rental ordinance. Called by Ms. Martin, supported by Mr. Al Shafi. Would you please call the role on that?
Councilwoman Ashafi?
Yes, for a more.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica? Yes. Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Towns.
Yes, now let me jump in and say, you waited five minutes, but you've been cooking, so I'm just gonna let you do your thing. Are you done?
I was gonna say, do I still have my time? Because I've included you guys in my time. You know, I've been sharing.
Yes, you have.
Okay, so, all right, real quick, I am going to finish this up. You guys, I am big on supporting the youth. I just want to share with you about the, um, the Boys and Girls Club. Um, they have a rental space. They wanted me to let you know that they will do anything from seven in the morning to eleven o'clock at night. That includes baby showers, birthdays, repass, whatever event, business, whatever it is that you have, um, for your event. Also, they have a, um, summer camp enrollment scholarship. That's about seventy-five percent off. That's part-time or full-time for kid, grandkid, aunt, uh, uh, not aunt, um, niece, nephew. I apologize, I'm tired. Um, also, they have a fashion. I love it because my daughter will be in it. You, um, want to learn how to sew? That's kind of like a lost skill. There's not a lot of people that sew. I know my mother did. I really wasn't something that I picked up on. Um, but they will pay, um, your fourteen-year-old or, um, I think it's fourteen to sixteen. They will pay them as, as they are learning to sew and make clothes and design. I think that's fascinating. Um, with that last thing I wanted to add, they also have a summer camp from June sixteenth to August fifteenth. Um, and that's to get our kids out here to do something and get involved. So with that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and finally take my, um, pass my twenty minutes to Manica. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.
Sorry.
It's a fire. Okay, good, good evening. Good evening, everyone. I hope that you had a interesting night. First, I want to make mention of some things and considerations. Ethical standards. Council members must avoid any appearance of using their position for personal gain or to influence outcomes in which they have a personal interest. Secondly, transparency. It is advisable for council members to disclose any potential conflicts of interest and recuse themselves from discussion or vote where such conflicts exist. These are just some examples and statements I wanted to make sure that my council are aware of. There you go again. No, I'm, I'm talking to all five of us. Uh, there were some questions about who can speak or who can speak during council, I mean, during citizen participation. Yes, council can speak during citizen participation. So can directors if the mayor gives them the allotment to do so. Um, council people just have to identify themselves, step down from here and identify themselves as, uh, at that time, private citizens, and that's what they're going to say. So those people who had that question, that's your answer. I have a more extensive part to that, but it, it sums it up pretty much so that they can, uh, they just have to, uh, step down from wherever they're sitting and say, hey, I am doing this as a private citizen. Speak, they only get the same amount of time a citizen gets, et cetera. They also must also maintain decorum and, and do that for civility and respectful conduct for ourselves as well as for you. The other thing is zoning and planning. Everybody kind of goes out of here all of a sudden. But, um, I have some residents and I have that concern too. We talked about lots, pri- uh, selling the lots and being careful how we do that because we must consider the fact that Highland Park needs revenue, guys. You need revenue and you need people here, so you need housing. I will continue to say this. I've been saying it now for two years. This is the third year. You need housing. You need people. And so just as an example of why sometimes I say, hey, no, let's think about who we're selling this to. Cause we have a lot of people that are here buying property that live other places, which is kind of fine if they were doing something to help you as the resident. But that's not what's happening. They're either continuing to just be renting it out, which is not helping you i- i- as far as revenue. And so, and so, again, as we talked about a workshop for the ordinance, there's a need for workshop for education in regards to how does this apply when you have a lot? I tried to mention this before. If you have a lot or you have a lot, that lot is only gonna bring you maybe two hundred and fifty dollars in, um, what's that, property tax? Yes, the water goes to, you know, the person who owns it. Now, some lots may be more, some lots might be less. But either way, when you put a property and you put persons on there, you put a house on there, you are bringing greater revenue to your city as well as you're providing some things called like walking points or, and that might not be in that case, but when it comes to money in your city, you need people. The young lady talked about schools. No, that's a school board dis- district issue. So please, we have a school board meeting that happens. Make sure you attend so that you can let them know what your concerns is about children and education in the city. Now, I do agree that the city has a responsibility to try to work with the school board to see how we can indeed get schools here, but you have to have people again to even talk about schools. So that is, a- and so a lot, a lot of times people get offended for whatever reason that I mentioned. Hey, we have a zoning board meeting. We have a school board meeting. Yeah, because those are the places that you really want to talk about those issues. But going back to the lots, so Bisfer, I have complaints and they were here, but. Or, or, okay, so there were some other, uh, residents here as well. We talked earlier. And so we sold some private lots to, we sold some lots to an individual. Then we sold some lots to a company. Wayne County sold a lot to a company. Well, in turn, some kind of way that company has acquired more lots in that row. So it can, I, I don't want to continue there, but I know they have more than what they had that we gave them. So that means somebody else either sold or gave. So now the residents are complaining because the whole block almost is now a parking lot. That is something that that block club does not want, or at least the ladies do not want it. At least the ladies that spoke to me. So I'm speaking on behalf of those residents in that, on that street who is very concerned. This same thing has happened all the way down in Berkeley or whatever when the restaurant, a popular restaurant, wanted to add additional parking lot down the street. The residents did not want it for several reasons. But I don't know how it came about that they knew, but either way, I have some residents. So I'm just pointing that out because those are things you have to think about. Because people come here and they maneuver, whether you know that or not, they maneuver to get what they want. If we're not consciously thinking about it, this is what happens. As we agreed on, and then so now that makes me ask, did they go to the zoning board? Did they go to planning? It never came to city council for them to have additional, a bigger parking lot. So therefore, is McKenna or whoever should be looking at that? So I was gonna ask administration to look at that because if planning didn't, um, approve it, zoning didn't approve it. I know we didn't approve it. It needs to be addressed.
I mean, hey.
Last, last couple of things that are really important.
That's why I said that.
May thirty-first, one to four P M. Myself, councilwoman, Tamiko Manica, District One, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, as well as, uh, I'm sorry. Uh, the Dove Foundation will be having a women's enrichment community baby shower Saturday, May thirty-first from one to four P M. It is at, um, excuse me, our station on, our community station on Hamilton. That address is one, three, two, three, three, Hamilton Avenue in Highland Park. Also, uh, you can also make donations for the baby shower in the meantime. And so that was what I wanted to mention. If you have any questions, you can see me later after this. Last thing, block club, the huge block club meeting is May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. When I say huge, that means everybody's block club, the, the city's block club meeting. And it's at six P M. at the Justice Center, one, three, two, three, three, Hamilton. Uh, last but not least, thank you for that revote, Ms. Martin. And thank you for the comments, uh, of the residents in regards to that. It is nothing personal. We have to stop being personal and be about business. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Council President?
Um, I'm gonna move on to, uh.
I, I just want to quickly say, Ms. Manica and Ms. Martin, they do need to work on their five minutes.
You're correct. They, they went, I, I, I was gonna say.
Is this my turn?
Definitely gonna be less.
Not the twenty-minute, not the.
Let's not, let's not steal.
You want to take this under the bleachers?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is Councilwoman. Let's not steal from her. He's right.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Let's not take from Madam Prosem.
Let's go, Madam Prosem. Let's not steal her time.
That's, that's the first.
It's a first. It's a first. And I was, I was over here chewing my jaw the whole time thinking. Okay, go ahead, Madam Prosem. The floor is yours.
I would, first, I would like to make a motion to amend the budget, May the twenty-seventh at seven P M.
Do we have to suspend the rules?
Yes.
Where do we amend it? Oh, well, we got to suspend the rules.
So wait a minute, hold on, hold on. Let me make sure before, you gotta write this down. You're making a motion to amend the budget.
Yeah.
On May twenty-seventh.
At seven P M.
Oh, no. I won't be here on May twenty-seventh at seven. I know where I'll be.
Oh, I'll stretch the email to Dr. Sein.
What day makes, what works good for you, Council President?
Well, first, it has to be motion to suspend the rules.
I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, thank you.
There's a second.
Second made by?
A second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules made by Councilwoman Robinson, seconded by Councilman Ashafi. Would you please call the role on the suspension of the rules?
Councilwoman Ashafi?
Yes, to suspend the rules.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Towns.
Yes.
Now, I would like to make a motion to amend the budget. I suggested May the twenty-seventh at seven P M., but it's in conflict, so what day can we do this?
It is at the leisure of council.
Is it, is it a motion to?
So you calling a special meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
So you can just call a special meeting?
Okay, well, I call a special meeting, May the twenty-seventh at seven P M.
Okay, so then if you do it in writing, then we don't even have to do a mo- you, you and Mr. Ashafi.
I'm doing a motion.
Okay, you're gonna do a motion? Okay, so we have, she's making a motion. There's a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Robinson to hold a special meeting on May twenty-seventh at seven P M. That's seconded by Councilman, uh, Man Ashafi.
Seventeen.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you go ahead and call the role on that special meeting?
Councilwoman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
You know.
Councilwoman Manica?
You're voting to amend the budget?
Yes.
On the twenty-seventh at seven o'clock.
Councilwoman Manica?
I'm trying to see if I'm available that day.
If it's three of y'all, you three will be at the meeting.
Who's the three?
I don't know. We'll see in a minute. We got one yes, one no.
No.
I'm sorry, ma'am?
No, I'm sorry, no.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Towns.
No, motion does not carry. Madam, the floor is still yours.
Okay, first, and now I want to speak on the lots. On Cando, it was three lots and one resolution, and we approved the one. And now I need to know the process for them to come back and get the other two lots. Because I, I sent them to the C D director and they were sent to council. So I'm asking that right now. How do we go about letting them get the other two lots?
Correct.
How do we go about doing that? Bosnick?
Uh, they would meet with the, uh, Director Clyburn if they want. They, they would go through the ordinary process, just like they did the first time they came before council. My understanding was that they didn't want lots, but maybe that's changed. I wouldn't know.
No, they wanted them.
Okay, yeah, then they would work through the same process. They would talk to Director Clyburn and try to get on the agenda.
Director Clyburn told us to come to council.
Yeah, yeah, they knew.
Okay, I also would like to let the citizens know that in the first couple of months when we all took our seats, I had suggested to the mayor that we let and allow the residents to have first dibs on the purchase of lots and property. She instructed me that that would cause lawsuits. I didn't understand it then, and I don't understand it now. And I just wanted to let everybody know that. And I'm done.
Okay, ma'am, thank you very much. I'mma, I'mma be under five minutes. Um, we're near the end of the school year. This is for, we're in, near the end of the school year. This is my first year teaching in a public high school system, and I did not give my environmental science students a final exam. They're doing a report. It's on simple basic phenomenon recognition. And what I want to caution all of you people in the audience for is our young people are not reading. They're not reading books. They're not reading magazines. And I, as a science teacher, teaching these kids environmental science, I was appalled that most young people cannot recognize a phenomenon. That means something that occurs either naturally or man-made that they can identify. A simple phenomenon is someone comes into, come in the building, one of them has an umbrella, the other one doesn't. They're both wet, but one of them is fully wet. What is happening? That was a simple question. And I had high school students that couldn't tell me the phenomenon was one person didn't have an umbrella and was outside. So I'm, I'm raising this question and I'm discussing it among the people so that the people that are at home and the people in the room can understand. Our children are. Our children are very deficient in their capacity as a result of the pandemic. And we are, there's going to be a rule in the school system that I teach in next year where students are not going to have their phones. And as a science teacher, teaching chemistry and environmental science, I can tell you that that is going to be catastrophic. I talked to my students today, all of my students. They're between fifteen and seventeen years old. They have never seen a time in their parents' in their life where their parents did not have a phone or a tablet, where they were multitasking. So, we've been doing this in front of this generation of children their entire lives. If your child was born in 2008 forward, they have never, ever seen their parents without their phones. They have never, ever seen their parents without at least one computer. We drive and talk. We text and walk around. We, we scroll. We watch TikTok. And we wonder why the children are deficient in this way. I told my fellow educators, if we take the phones away from the children, they may shut down learning altogether. And I'm asking you as people in the community who care about education, please start engaging the young people in your family. It's about to be the end of the school year. And since they were babies, you've been sticking a device in their face. Here, sit on your tablet. Here, play with your phone. We're not talking to the kids anymore. And I would never do it to my students. I'm one of the only teachers in the school that tells the students, you're going to use your phone to help you do your coursework. I teach my students how to use AI, how to use Google. I show them how to use the tool, not to be relying upon it, but how to use this tool to find if ferret out information. So, I'm just encouraging all the people with young folks in your family, grab ahold of those young people. The semester is about to end. You put your phone down. You sit them and put, have their, put their phone down, have a conversation with them about real-life things because these kids are deficient in the skills that make us human. So, that's my urge for you. That is, it's a very important, Highland Park does not have a school system. We have charter schools. So, we're going to have to engage our kids so that they get those skills. That's all I have for y'all. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion for adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night. Nine twenty-four.